My fellow colleagues, law enforcement sheriffs throughout the country, those elected leaders that have worked with us. The other one is a team members 2023 annual meeting that I meet with once a year. The things that we have done and things that we embrace when it comes to our cultural values. And I think it's really important, if you look at that and get the time to look at it, you look at four facilities in Cochise County. That's cost the taxpayers nothing. The border center, which is just innovative in itself, one of a kind. You look at the Wilcox remodel includes security at going to the courthouse. The CCOM, and then last not least, you look at our training center here at the sheriff's office in Bisbee. These are all facilities that were built through donations and grants that I'm very proud of. And then you look at all the innovative enforcement programs, the state funding, and on the back of that, you can see some of the programs. But on the back, you can see since 2013 to 2022, we have brought in over $100 million to offset the taxpayers to help them. So it's not coming out of their pocket. Now, some will say, well, this is recycled, they pay taxes. You bet they did pay taxes, but if we don't take it, somebody else will. But 1% comes out of the federal government, 99, 98% comes out of the state and private donations that we've been fortunate enough to secure. As I go through this PowerPoint, it's very simple. PowerPoint this year, we didn't get complicated with it. The chief and Selena and I and members of the executive team, as we put this together, because we've offset so many cost challenges based on our grants. The border has been a huge challenge. I keep that picture up there because it's telling me where I lost the incentive in my team. The first challenge has been the border. There's no doubt of the last three years, this border has cost a lot of money. And but we've been innovative in that. If you look at the county year 22, 23, it's cost $9.4 million for border imperceptions. We paid very little of that to the state of Arizona to pay for that. It's not coming out of our federal fund budget. If it was, we'd be in serious trouble here. And the many addiction, the many programs that we have out there, fentanyl and a list of drugs, obviously, that's a challenge with us. Fentanyl is a challenge throughout the United States, and we're not on top of that, obviously, we lose lives. The rule of law, we continue to be an agency that believes in the rule of law. There's a lot of challenges that way. I'll always say with politics, discretion, all the things coming through on that. Bottom line is, we still push the rule of law for the purpose of what we are, since part of our culture. One thing that's a huge challenge is marketplace competitiveness. Our recruitment retention is being challenged. Our two competitors are, I'll just tell you, is border patrol in our backyard and DPS in our backyard. And I'll hate to say it, but sheriff's offices are touching that too. A human county sheriff's deputies just went to 65,000, matched DPS salary to 65,000. A lot of them are already in the 60s, we're still sitting back at 55. I was pretty proud of what we've done. I want to thank the board for what we're doing, those members that have supported that, our budget. But the bottom line is, it's not getting easier. I mean, everywhere we go, it's like, wow. And so, but we've done well. Our reputation is what's carried that when it comes to our competitiveness, competitivenessness. The fact is that we put an opening for deputy sheriff last couple of months, in four weeks, we had 90 people apply. That's unheard of. Even during the scrutiny of law enforcement, we didn't take a hit that bad, mainly because who we are and how much work we put in from education, awareness, prevention, and then the enforcement side of it. And that's part of our rule of law challenge. Inflation, we understand what it is. I'll just say this, we do two huge events a year that we're part of. The one that we hosted, the charity ride, we give out $100,000, $50,000 a year to veterans groups, to school educational groups, animal groups that help animals, youth groups, shop with the copper funded to that. And that's through our business communities throughout Cochise County. And let me just say, they, they're just great partners. And we talk to them all the time, just got done with Cars for Kids. We raised over close to $60,000 for Cars for Kids. That's a no cost show, that means we're the third biggest sponsor we get, which means we don't have any. Long story short is talking to the businesses, they're doing well. Talking to Ryan Heemore yesterday, I asked him, so Ryan, you mind if I just share this? And he said this, he goes, things are fabulous right now for us. We're selling houses like crazy, he goes, the growth on and on. So again, in that aspect, I get it. I know the groceries are higher, we're all paying for it, but we're all part of this community too when it comes to that. But, but we're doing our part, and I told my team, we all agreed on that, we're doing our part for offset that. I really, I'll just tell you, we have one request this year. And that request simply put is, is with inflation of 4%, we're asking for a $2,600 raise based on, we did a market survey, which we have that, which we're right in line with, which would probably add to. The, our average is 6% below market, but the $2,600 helps to offset that cost. It total request will be 437, 437,000, $430,000. We can offset that with some of our cost through our grants, which leads to $200,000. And I'll just say this, I'm probably going to get stuck by my team, we could actually, with agreeance with this board, actually offset that completely if we had to. But that makes it real tight. We're very financial stewards of our budget. We have been since, for the past few years I've been sheriff, we have no anticipation or expectation to change that. Selena keeps us online on that, trust me. Like when I travel, I pay for my own food, I do all that. So we do a lot of in-house efficiency, I'm very proud of that. Some of the saving proposals, last year we were, two years ago, we were with the body cameras and tasers with Exxon. As you remember, last year, they bumped it up really high. We actually, and I want to credit the chief for this, we went head to head with Exxon on this one. As a result, we negotiated with a savings of $104,000 savings per year, which that will help offset some of these proposals. Only proposal is the competitive market side. I'm doing this with you all for a long time. The other expenses from the animal shelters, that was like 70 some thousand, 78,000, I think it was, couldn't make it wrong, Selena on that one. We're taking care of that in-house, based on our savings. Again, these grants are really helping us out. SWAT had a $21,000, $22,000 equipment replacement, we did that in-house, we grant, and last, and some savings. And last not least is all additional, we wanted to come very simple. We understand the state is challenged this year. I will say this to you, I went up and had to speak on both the House and Senate, I met with Governor Hobbs a week and a half ago, along with six other sheriffs and all her department directors. Her call to all of us was, she has prioritized public safety and there will be no cuts to us. I also brought the concern of cities and counties enduring the debt of state. I've also talked to our state legislative appropriations chairs, everybody, and they've told me that border counties are a priority to them. And what we're addressing down here, because I understand we're doing the impact of the work here for the state, which I think in a lot of ways we are. And so I've got positive affirmation that they're going to do the right thing, but until we see it right, and I respect that they can change that. But, but the governor told her team that they would not cut public safety, especially in this border area. So that's what I have, chief, if I missed anything, very simple. Selena, if I missed anything, so I'll give back for questions.
Couple of questions, when I look at ahead of time, the Legacy Foundation grant, quite substantial, million or two. How many years is that grant for? Because you've already hired, what, four people out of that?
Four caretakers and, and, man, Watson for you.
Sheriff, can you address that, please? Yes. The grant was originally for three years. It took, as you predicted, it took a while for us to hire qualified professionals. We didn't end up digging into that grant for almost six months after it was implemented, and then it took almost a year to hire the entire team. So we have around a year and a half left, maybe two, depending on how things go.
So what is the plan for those people when the grant is gone? Were they all hired knowing they are grant employees?
Absolutely, ma'am. We are diligently seeking grants and we're working with Dr. Clay to either, one, pick up federal grants, to staff this, two, try and use some of the opioid funds to offset that. Or three, possible, we could possibly do some other things. But at this time, we are not asking for any impact to our general fund budget. But it is a very successful team and we are vigorously trying to find out ways to sustain that program moving forward.
Well, I'm excited about the program, you know, I think it's been a good thing. But county budgets are not going up, you know, we're not bringing in more money. And so when I look at a figure like that, I'm going, I don't want to start something that we can't continue.
Absolutely.
Because we haven't really gotten it, all of its legs yet, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's performing some, but not to its capacity.
Yes, ma'am.
And hopefully, the year and a half that you have left in funding, it'll be performing at capacity. But I, I don't want whoever's sitting in this seat next time to go, well, where am I supposed to find the money to continue that? It was just, it was just a question of, have we thought about where that's going?
Absolutely, we have had candid conversations with all people involved before they were hired. They were excited that the opportunity to do that, we were not able to sustain the program, but they've been highly effective. And it's been something that Dr. Brunisini and I wanted to do is come to the board and present a presentation of their successes, and I think you would be surprised. But thank you, at this time, we're not asking for that to impact this year's general fund or next year's.
Man, and chair, I could say is, this, this care team is one of many innovative programs we have out there. And they understand, these are contract positions, when the money goes, then we have to renew it, or you can't renew it. On our border initiatives, many border initiatives that we have, I've asked the governor and I've asked the state to renew that till 2029, to bring those funds forward on that. So, and it appears like they told me they, they all support that, so I'm hoping that happens. On the care team, your second question on that is, this is a regional team that's impacted, and Jackie Clay's been a huge, great partner in this, I'm, if he's in the room or not. But also, it's impacting every city and every school. I think collectively, if this grant doesn't get renewed by the Legacy Foundation, we can't pick up another sponsor on this, then we go to every police department and every school and say, well, let's combine our resources and share that cost. Because everybody is a winner at the end of the day on this program. It's been, it's done amazing work of keeping those critical events becoming worse, let's put it that way, do something, so, help a lot of people.
Okay, the other question I have is, is there money going to be flowing from the legislature? Because they always want to take care of, of public safety. And so they said, well, retention's a problem, so they set some money aside. How's that affect you, retention money?
And sure, retention money.
Are they setting aside any money for retention of public safety employees?
We didn't have that conversation with her like we did with Governor Ducey, I can say that much. But I, I know we talked about the challenges with hiring, we challenged about all that. Her overall statement to us was that law enforcement would be a priority for her and anything that comes in front of her.
But the legislature, are they looking at any?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we, we've had great talks with, with both the House Senate up there, the leadership, the appropriations chair.
Are they putting it in the budget anywhere?
I don't know.
That's my question.
I talked to.
Is it talk or is it money?
Yeah, and again, I feel good because I've had numerous talks. They understand, this is part of their appointments, and this is why I've been told, that's why we host these congressional tours and, but they like what we're doing. They, in fact, they come down and get these tours, that's why we do so many of them, because the more efforts they can see on what we're doing down here, we're not just sitting on our butts complaining about it, we're actually putting action forward. And the more they see we're doing, the more they support. But everybody I can talk to up there, both sides of the House, both political sides, they like what we're doing. So I, I think we're going to be okay, and that's just an opinion, because I don't have anything on right to show you all three. But the bottom line is, the governor's already made it very clear in front of her department heads and seven other sheriffs that this would be a priority. I was told that last year we got 12.3 million, we covered a lot of our grants, that we should split up with sheriffs, that that money would be possibly increased, but the minimum happened to be sustained at 12.3.
Well, they're doing budget talks now, and I thought maybe you had talked with some of the legislature that had given you some idea that that money was going to be available?
All I can tell you has been positive with them. And I talked to Senator Gowan last night, I talked to Representative Gail Griffin last night. I mean, there's not a week go by I'm not stalking somebody in the house up there, I talked to appropriations chairs. I mean, because I know how important that is to this community and to you all three and to every council mayor in this community, and I know some of the mayors are doing that too. So all we can do is voice it, but again, we do have confirmation from the governor.
Well, the, the one thing I can say is, I don't know where new money is going to come from in Cochise County. And so I, I understand the concept of you wanting to pay more. But, you know, your department is probably no different than every other department head is looking and saying, I need to pay more. And you're looking at a board that's saying, I, I want you to be well paid, but when you have a finite amount of resources, I'm not sure what we can commit to right now. Because the legislature hasn't signed any ID, they haven't hit us with anything that we can put our arms around and knowing what the budget's going to be like. But I do thank you for looking at the possibility of, because I know I've read through many of the grants that you're getting, and they do have something in there about personnel. And so thank you for looking at being able to do what you think needs to be done with your department through the grants that you have. Because I'm not sure what we're going to be able to come up with is extra money. Because we all know that our electricity costs more, all, our gas costs more at the county, all of our supplies are costing more, and that's just doing normal business. It's kind of like, you know, the, the food at the jail, it's not going to be the same price as it was last year, unless you change the diet to something different. Do you see what I'm saying?
He's 40 pounds, wait, man.
Yeah.
Don't eat. I'm sure, I 100% respect, and that's why we go after these brands, whether private or state, very, like I said, 1%, 2% maybe, it all will be federal. But we get exclusive grants that are inclusive in the fact that they cover ERs, they cover everything. I'm not coming to you and saying, hey, I need $15,000 from the person from me if I hire this. That's why I don't go after the cops brand, because we're going to pay for it very quickly.
Exactly, five years down the road, they become out.
Yeah, and I've been with the cops director, DC, but sheriff, let me help you, you can't, because your program doesn't help us. We can't, can't stand it, one year, can't.
And I've looked at you in the past and said, don't go for cops. We get caught in the spiral on that one.
And trust me, you trained me well, and, and I say that, and I say that in a positive way. My, my first team sheriff, I know, we butted heads, but we butted heads and I understood, and I thought more about it. But, so I, we've been buried, everybody in the back room has something to do with where we're at today with the sheriff's office. And I think we've, we've done well here in Cochise County and the state and, but, and even this year, worst case scenario. And is, we could do it in-house right now with our raises, without anything from you. But that makes it tight.
Right.
It makes it real tight. So you can understand, we try to build with you to the future, and that's, that 200,000 we're asking for is, takes us into the future, but it also keeps us competitive. I lost four guys this year, so I think three or four guys, DPS already this year, because, think about this.
God bless them.
Oh, I'll hold my comments to the room accordingly. But, but the bottom line is, they can walk over, a guy with five years can walk over DPS making 75,800, they can go to Tucson, 70,800, they go to Phoenix, make 90,000 right now. I mean, my sergeant's up there making 130, 140,000. I mean, but they can't, that's why I've countered, this is world.
They can't buy a house.
That's right, this is quality of life, living, I like it. And that's why we have the partnership with Cochise College, we have that, we're keeping the homegrown CTE program in our schools. We're, I mean, you hit it, we're, we're knocking on the door, trying to get it better for us here, and, and it's worked, it's really worked. And, but I understand the budget too. But again, we're asking very low this year because we understand where the state's at, and we also understand where you're all at. So hopefully, at the end of the day, we can all shake hands, so.
Tom, do you have any comments?
Sure. I'll just repeat the comments that I made for Mr. McIntyre earlier. And I said, with regard to failures to yield, fentanyl deaths, court costs, medical costs, incarceration and so on, all of these are decreased to the degree that illegal entry is prevented, talking about the border. Texas is ignoring the Supreme, Supreme Court's claim to sole jurisdiction on the border, which doesn't exist as per the US Constitution. And the 10th Amendment says that all unenumerated power ends with the people. And I'm sure that, well, I just gave this to my colleagues in this, so. 111051, which has to do with counties, I'm sure that you've seen it before, I know that my colleagues have. And the title of it is Cooperation in Assistance in Enforcement of Immigration Laws and Indenification. And I'll just read the first sentence. No official or agency of the state or county, city, town, or other political subdivision of the state may limit or restrict the enforcement of federal immigration laws to less than the full extent permitted by federal law. And then I'll make this real quick, I'm not going to attempt to read any, anything like the whole bunch of it. But this is chapter eight, United States Code 1182, having to do with inadmissibility. So inadmissibility is one of those federal laws with which it says, no political subdivision of the state may limit or restrict the enforcement of federal immigration laws to less than the full extent permitted by federal law. So I know that we've talked about this before, but I just appreciate whatever update you care to give us on your views on this 111051, which I recognize we have disagreed about before, if you care to.
Mr. Crosby, let me just say this, when it comes to how we've addressed border security, immigration is a component. We're addressing border security and the state crimes within. I don't think there's a sheriff, and I don't say this in an arrogant way, or look at me, I say it in a way of, we have collectively come together to work with our state and federal partners and our sheriffs around the country, by bringing deputies from all over the state down here. We're sending a message to the cartels, we're sending a message to our citizens that we care about it, we're doing it in full. The legality side of what you're saying, I have talked to everything from legal to national sheriffs, to attorney generals, to US attorneys, to our own attorney, I mean, and Ms. Robb, she knows that she sits here, I don't want to get deep into those discussions. But where you read that, that takes a collective criminal justice system to make it happen. And I'm one sheriff doing many things. When you can put almost 3,000 people in jail in two years for border crimes in this county, and, and that county attorney's office is only so big, and, and we have very little support. I'm doing everything within a reasonable person can do. And, and I'll tell you, it's costing us a lot of money, but I have not asked this board for general fund money. My deputies have worked their tail off for two years, we're taking kind of a reprieve, trying to get back and breathe a little bit here. The states help pay, well, they have, they paid all their overtime, paid their salaries, but let's get back to reality, the federal government, and again, thank you for some of the comments you've made some of these meetings as chair, is the fact that they need to step up and do their job. And, and as we know, they have chose not to, that's not the agents. These, these are, 51% of Congress and administration has chose to take a different approach and has not prioritized this border. I have prioritized this border, and my team has prioritized it. We have looked at every angle we can do, work with my legal team, and one thing, I think we've been very successful. My citizens, I hear it everywhere I go, thank you sheriff for what you're doing, but they also understand the restraints I have. I mean, I'm, I have allocated resources and budgets, give me three times the resources, well, three times the stats for you, but unfortunately.
But you still will do the federal.
I, I, I don't, I'm not an immigration officer.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not an immigration officer.
If we gave you more money.
Exactly, these are state violations. I got to prioritize what a sheriff has to do, and number one is protect the citizens, and we're doing that. You break into a house, you harm somebody, I mean, 2022, 2022, we had over 600 felony victims of crimes in this county that we investigated. That's incredible, that's off the charts for us. When you look at 44% of all the people in our jail, pregnant or pregnant, that commander, are border related crimes. Our average is 5 to 10% on a bad year. So we are doing our part, but I got a jail that's 40 years old that is leaking at the seams, literally.
That's a story for a different time, it is, Mark.
I, I, I just, I just want to share with you, and I appreciate your concern, it surprised me, I appreciate others' concerns, but I'm not a wizard, I'm a sheriff. And I'm doing everything I can within authority and, and I, I work hard around the country trying to get it. But I'm also working hard with many states, many sheriffs at national level, working together to share intel and stop it before you even get to Cochise County. So Christine and I, and Commander and my team, everybody wants, thanks, Kilkish for one. Man, Watson, I know, taking a lot of the operations, do you want to add anything I missed on that?
No, sheriff, I think you said that everything we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I could repeat this 111051, but I won't do that, and my platform will continue to be prevent entry.
I believe I said that too, but you always have a different way of doing it, so.
Just stand down there.
No, I'm willing to reallocate whatever resources there are, if, if you want to take up 111051 there, at face value, black and white law.
Not today, do you have any comments?
I don't have anything, I, I did have a question, it wasn't very clear, but it sounds like the 2,600 might be something you have to work out. But it wasn't clear with how close that would get you to your competitors, kind of looked at that for a minute.
How many, how much of that is for people that aren't sheriff's deputies?
That's everybody, and we, instead of breaking down into, because if you take 5%, this is something I can.
No, no, what, what I'm saying is, you were asking for that for all of your staff.
100%.
Not just the deputies.
No, it's everybody.
But, but how close would that get you?
Oh, yeah, it gets us very close. Now, in the deputy world, we're still on, because when you got deputies, you and we just went to 60.
You'll never get enough.
And we're not going to.
They're going to keep going up, yeah.
And, and you taught me that early on, too, it's one of the lessons I learned, I wanted to jump for the stars and I got some sky. So, but as long as we're staying competitive and with the, the, the sport I have in the community, the support, everyone here is a neighbor, everybody's a neighbor in this county. I, we're happy with it, my team's happy with it. Again, that, if you break that down, it's a hundred bucks extra paycheck after taxes, it's 50 bucks a month, or 50 bucks a paycheck. And that's not a lot of money, but it's not that, it helps, it helps, everything helps.
Well, if the board raised the tax rate, we could bring in more. Better.
We did.
Concept. Just throwing it out there, you know, there is a way to bring more money in if you want to do that. Okay.
I think we should bring more citizens in and have more people making more money. Anybody got an argument against that?
Nope. Well, I was. Always for economic development.
And, and man, Chair, I get the privilege, I, I will say this, the new border center, we, there's, we hired, at the, how many extra people working at border center right now? That's an economic boost.
34 from our team.
Sure, yeah, right there, so you got booths that are now shopping, here's some, here's some of retired now back to work, some people.
Are they driving in from out of county?
I think most of them live here, do they, they all live?
Uh, man, and chair, yes, everyone in Sabre works here in, or lives here in Cochise.
They live here, they spend here, it's, it's a good.
Well, several of those positions that you had were for people like watching cameras and.
Maintenance, camera.
Are they all called Sabre?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It is a fallacy that the government creates jobs. It is a fallacy. Increases the production of market economics.
Mr. Crosby, let me, let me add this, not to get in debate with you, but in the public safety lane, I'm very content where we're at. I'm not an economic driver, I try to preserve.
I never have been either.
But I, what I'm saying is, public safety promotes economics, and my election, my authority is to keep people safe, and that draws people into the community, that's my job. Say that.
When respecting people coming to Cochise County, the biggest two things they ask about are the educational system and law enforcement. So that's their reality, so that's what we have to, what we have to deal with, is so we need to be comfortable that we're on those two fronts. And of course, you work in one of them, as one area of law enforcement, but all the other cities and et cetera, there's all kinds of law enforcement out there. And we have a county school superintendent this year and working all the schools and in charge of that. So we have a touch base, but we don't have control.
Man, and chair, when I, especially when we do a lot of the Realtor associations, especially out of service area, they tell me this all the time, and I have people tell me this when they come in and they meet with my same, I get in the, in the soda, whatever. They say, the reason we moved here is, they did their homework on public safety and they realized that rule of law, and they realize that we're enforcing things we are, we're keeping them safe best we can. So that's a driving force. When it comes to creating corporations here or stuff, that's really not a sheriff thing, but the bottom line is, it's a real balance between an unsafe county and an economically proven community. I work very close with the hospital CEO and all the folks around the county and the mayors, trying to help that balance in there too. But we're, police chief, myself, troopers and border patrol and CBP are all working really well together.
Any other comments, Mr.?
No, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, thank you.
Tom?
Without question, the top issue is.
Yeah.
Rick, you have anything to add?
Oh, thank you. Just that.
You came all this way, do you have anything to add about the numbers? Or are you just, just here to take the flax in case there was a problem with the numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
No specific questions, that's why.
Just in case we get into too much detail.
Under some malfeasance.
I know, I, I recognize that for a long time.
Anna was so nice today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, if there isn't anything else to add, I want to tell you when our next meeting will be, and that will be. And that will be on Thursday, April eighteenth at one PM. In the board supervisor's meeting room, and it will be specifically about the Cochise County Assessor's Office. Any other comments? Hearing none, work session adjourned, thank you.